We're in your bill, Act 1168, a bill that actually prohibits the use of eminent domain in certain public-private partnerships, prohibits the use of eminent domain for a private business entity in a public-private partnership. It's good to see you, Senator, in your fourth.
Thank you, Representative Hovings, and I appreciate your courtesy. We've been on our way long, long ways. We haven't agreed all the time, but we have remained friends. Courtesy, in fact, is a good title for all things together, I think. Thank you. My name is Paul Davis, Representative Hovings, and member of the Joint State Committee on Judiciary, and I represent Senate District Four, which includes all of the Scottus County and parts of Penaukka and Somerset County. And I'm here today to present to you LD 1168, an act to prohibit the use of eminent domain in certain public-private partnerships and to prohibit the use of eminent domain by a private business entity in a public-private partnership. Many citizens, many Maine citizens, including a vivid number of my constituents, have expressed over the last three or four years very serious concerns about the use of eminent domain. And it's no secret what has brought this on is the proposal of a four main highway across the state domain. The comments at Arnoldton Towns have been negative to the use of eminent domain. People fear the use of eminent domain to take their land away from them. I recall one day standing in a vineyard in the town of Garland, and a farmer pointed across the road, and he said, "You see that meadow?" And of course I did, and he said, "They want that meadow." And then he pointed up behind his barn, and he said, "You see that meadow?" And he said, "They don't get the one down there, they want that one up there." And he says, "It's been in my family for six or seven generations, and it is not to sell it, period." He did not want to sell his land. And trust me, he's not alone with this fear he has. I have some experience with eminent domain. I've had land taken from me or my family on two different occasions. Many years ago, probably about thirty-five years ago, after my grandfather passed away, the land that his house sat on, which was about six or seven acres, went down a gully and crossed and on another road, was taken by eminent domain. Now, the land that he had, he had nice home, and my grandmother was very dexterous with gardening and that type of thing, she had a beautiful garden, and flowers all over. Down in the gully, there was apple trees, my grandfather kept these, and that was there, and they're there. And a year or so later, they put it up a bit, and today there is a tie-up factory there, a tie-up salon, a tie-up business there along with a garage business, and that land is gone. And I would like to still have it, but it's gone. Roll the clock ahead a few years, and the state came up to saying, "Build in nineteen ninety-one or two," and they had a very ambitious plan on Route 23. They were going to widen the road, they were going to go out by what we all hoped, what was called the old dump, and they were going to put in a pass lane out there, and not do so, because a lot of people's land, they took a piece of mine, and land across the road in the post office in Sangiovese, and it was not to sell it, and yet they took it. And then out by my house where I live, they were going to close, I live on, on the Four Conners, they were going to close out one entrance and have another one, and have it being sweetened and pure, and they took some land rights from me there. That was nineteen ninety-one. Progress is slow up there in the country, because they don't know anything when they get. Now, I fought them off. They offered me $400, and then by the time we get there, I get $800. I told the commissioner about this, well, I'll go, it's transportation, and he told me he would look into it, because I liked about that, then use it on the head. It's my, it's my business, that's where I feel about it. Many people all across Maine and all across the country worry about the government taking their land with them. They don't want their land taken with them. Land is what produces our riches, our economy, the wealth of our country comes from the land. And when you give it to the government, they don't use it as wealth, but some people do. It's enough that they have to worry about the government taking it. They should not have to worry about it being turned over to a private business entity. Now, as I spoke before, I fought them off, and if the government, if it stays in government power, and trust me, folks, this is a part of the power that government has, the people do have some rights. You have the right to appeal, in our way, you can fight with them over it. I wouldn't recommend Carl not getting all over the tree, or he'd probably catch that one, would not be my thought, but you can make it difficult for the government to take it. You may not win, but you can do better for yourself if you do make it difficult for And because of the system and the way the government works versus private enterprise, I just so strongly believe that that kind of power should stay with the government and not be taken by private enterprise. As I said, I don't always agree with the decision to take the property, but it is the government's right to do that, it's for the purpose of office, of the map, or whatever, or whatever. But when a property, first, first of all, when this is turned over to the private enterprise, private enterprise works so much differently than government. Private enterprise, the CEO of the company, he makes decisions, or she makes decisions, and they don't have a lot of red tape, they get to make most of them, and that's good, that's the way a business should be. They don't have to worry about earnings and all that sort of thing very much, they can do in prosper, in cause of solid progress, I don't disagree with it. But I don't think private business should be, should be doing this, I don't think they should have this kind of power. I think that if private businesses are not ready, if you're using the power of eminent domain, they may exercise it without proper rules in place, without the, without the things that you can do. I ask you to support this bill. I know that DOT and other votes in the government don't like it. Well, you know, sometimes when kids come down here, I think to myself, "Well, that lady baby is bad today." Sometimes, what the government does can be bad, and the domain is one of their babies. And I prefer it, it won't be bad, yeah, off the cap, it will be good. So with that, I would be happy to try to answer any questions. And Mr. Chairman, I beg your indulgence, I have a committee over there, it's all now starting this afternoon, and I'm going to need to be back to one, if you'll forgive me.
I think a couple of my members have all been out, I will you.
Very concerned about that.
I think they might be suspect, so I think you might have to take that all.
I'm very concerned, Mr. Chairman, very concerned.
We'll keep that all to ourselves. Any questions from the good senator, from the senator's name?
Thank you, Sheriff, please reach as possible. Good presentation, Senator Davis, thanks.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I've got my constitution out, and I'm looking for the clause in the constitution, I'm just trying to find quickly on the end of the document, do you happen to have that reference?
I think you have that.
One last question, it's on the...
Is this in the constitution?
It's in the main, it's in the main, there is a reference to it in the main constitution. My question was going to be, have you had the language in our main constitution that requires that people be compensated by the public entity to examine whether it's even constitutional for a private entity to enter into that kind of, no, this is constitutional for a private company or corporation to benefit from whatever the building, or a state, seems like, and around, sir.
You're asking if they would sue me compensated?
Have you examined whether that's even constitutional for a private entity to have the same rights as what you deal with?
I don't know, I, I, you know, I guess you can give a wink of a nod, and say, "We aren't going to give it to them, but what do you want, guys?" You know, I, I think that, I just think, Representative, that the private entity needs to be kept out, that's my thing. Take a map out of all the routes they want on, and I've said repeatedly, if this, this one particular proposal, this isn't the only proposal, eminent domain could do the same, but if this one particular proposal, they can be all those, all the regulations that individual communities have set out, and they can do it without eminent domain, I mean, they can do it.
I did, you might want to check, I did find the reference, it's Article One, Section Twenty-One, "Private property shall not be taken for public uses, public uses without just compensation, nor unless the public has exigencies required." So you may want to, you know, have that examined, and see, make your concerns about taking their representation, so I would just, well, for the work session, you may want to get an opinion on whether Section Twenty-One would satisfy the requirements.
Well, again, it's current costs, current values what to go by. I assure you that right now, land prices and home prices in the Scottus County, our general area of Penaukka, Somerset County, land values are considerably depressed compared to what they were a few years ago, and hopefully, they considerably less, if they'd be five weeks from now. Taking a piece of land now will be, on my mind, a private somebody who has a chance to gain.
We'll take one more question, and then we'll go to the Congress and do the...
I understand the current state of real estate, right, but the question I have for the work session is whether it's even constitutional to allow a private entity to use the state as the vehicles that take people's property.
Well, the public, public, excuse me, the public-private partnerships have become one entity, if I understand right. Now, I would like to say also, one of the big selling points that has been pushed forward on this east-west highway business is that the towns will be able to tax this, that there'll be four miles of road going through your town, it's worth thirty million dollars, you can tax it. I don't believe that's true when it comes to public. For the public, how is that true? How can, the public doesn't tax itself.
I didn't mention anything, I just wanted, for the work session, I just wanted, I just want to get the information of whether the private-public partnership has the same rights to eminent domain or CDs as just a public.
I have two of my animals to find them, alas, they turn each other for picking the left, so of the kind, at least me. I know some kind of person. It's not that, I'm not, by the way, still...
I think we have a question from Senator Derrick.
Thank you, Mr. Derrick, in light of your testimony, saying that you know for a fact it has happened, this state private, private, did, for our work session, you think of the opportunity to try to identify or can identify, how many transactions, say, have happened in the last ten years?
Of the state taking land, land domain?
With the private entity involved.
I asked.
Yeah, I mean, I just, if it's happened to you and...
Well, when it happened to me, it was public private, it was just the state.
Right, but you made reference to a party that you knew that had, that they put up a tire shop or something.
No, what happened was, the public took it, and then the next year, they put the land up a bit, and private, private entity bought the land.
But your point on that state entity didn't end up using it for their use, DOT or whatever, they sold it to a different private entity, commercial, business, retail, whatever it was, that's my point, if we could find out maybe how often that's happened in the last ten years, that would be important, I think, making.
I would ask that you ask that question, too.
I think they're, I think they're present, so we might, they might get that question, so, for President Derrick.
Hello, welcome for our committee.
Thank you.
Is the mid-tercut authority, is that private?
It's a quasi, I believe it's a quasi-public private entity.
So would that, and the building has a name, right, would this apply to that, like in the United States?
I don't know how the, when that was done, I don't know how they took the land. I know they went through Mount Hope Cemetery, and they went through the middle of it, so I'm sure they must have bought, must have bet some hospital or theirs on it, I don't know what they, I don't know.
Would this bill, the concept of it, have applied to the United States?
They would have to go around, I know. They'd have to find it all through, instead of my second city.
And how does that affect the government?
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
I'd like to get back to your committee.
Oh, boy, I'm telling you. I have strange, thank you.
Take care, thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor about this bill, at this time, or anyone else would like to speak in favor of this bill, this conference?
Hello, my name is Joey Stevens, I'm a resident of Augusta. I'm here in support of LD 68. I believe eminent domain originally is intended in the constitution for government use, and I think that if they are in cahoots or cooperation with a private entity, that they shouldn't have the same right to use eminent domain as a strictly government entity would be able to use eminent domain, because they're going to profit from it, and their private profits are in no way going to benefit the state, and that's what eminent domain is intended for, is things that are necessary to benefit the state.
How do I, just give us your name?
Joey, Joey, yeah, Stevens.
Okay, I apologize, I know. Very well, Ms. Stevens, thank you. Any questions, Ms. Stevens? Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the LD 1168 this time? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, I'm Hendrick Giedens from Brooklyn, Maine. I don't see anything that I should...
No, we, I, we don't, we don't use that strategy, we're one of the few committees that doesn't bother, we've got excellent staff and support staff that takes down all the mains and stuff.
All right, it's a pleasure to be here, I had no idea that I would ever testify before any government committee about eminent domain, but that I didn't know that I would get hooked on the east-west corridor issue. I'm pleased to be able to testify today in favor of LD 1168, to find out that I did not do all the spell-checking in testimony that I wrote several weeks ago first, and so I still have LR 373, so forgive me. For four years, I've been, I've been climbing a very steep learning curve, Chimbrow first submitted its proposed private east-west corridor to the 125th legislature, and as you know, it set off a storm of astounding and imaginative civilization of citizen municipal action, and I got involved in it. At first, the focus was purely on the deeply felt environmental issues, and they were huge, and they had to do with the aquifers and salmon streams and pristine fishing lakes and so on. Soon thereafter came procedural questions, how could such a proposal be dropped wholesale on the legislature as it was, who would pay, where did it fit into the state's overall transportation planning? Then questions about government itself emerged, was this a new manifestation of the corporate public citizen battles being fought in central and western Maine over bottled water companies seeking access to aquifers belonging to all of us? Now, what can citizens and municipalities and counties do to protect themselves against the deep-pocketed legal threats of today's multinational corporations? Still, another bigger perspective, how did this proposal fit into the ultimately unsustainable consumption-driven premises underlying global trade? How might the dispute resolution provisions of NAFTA be employed? Those are non-governmental, that's an international civil service. Three attorneys decide on issues that are, you know, brought when corporations are perceived to have been denied profits they might not otherwise have earned. And these are new and strange and wonderful things that are, that are happening to us. How did it jide with what we value as wild and natural Maine to be asked to commit itself to further exacerbating climate destabilization by building a diesel-fueled truck transportation corridor plus modalities for moving fossil fuels? I mean, these are huge issues, okay? No single bill can, can address any of them, and, and so, this is one little piece of the action, something that we could, we could do that would put a little bit of a block in, in favor of something, would otherwise be a big boulder rolling downhill. I'm a sysopussy, and I like to roll them up, and then when they roll down, I go back to the bottom and do it again there. And so, it, the question is, can we strengthen the legal protection of Maine people confronting private development interests driven by corporations with resources far beyond those municipalities, indeed far beyond the state? If we can update our agreements, our understanding, our provisions for eminent domain, we will have done something constructive, that is, should be done, and that's what I came to say to you all today. I appreciate the privilege. You have questions? I'll try to answer them.
Any questions? Well, thank you very much.
I'm pleased to admit, thank you.
Well, I hope this wasn't too painful coming before us.
It wasn't painful, waiting, waiting downstairs through the ag committee.
Yeah, well, that is legislative time, for a specific...
Yes, well, I understand that, I did a lot of this kind of stuff when I was a Fed, way back in the sixties and early seventies, so...
Good you did.
Yeah, I retired, and I could do it for fun.
Well, it's good to see you, thank you, you're just fine. They're awfully welcoming you back here, if you want to.
If I need to come, I will.
Thanks. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this bill this time? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I actually have also brought the testimony of a few other folks.
No, that's fine.
Eric Arubloff, Peter Crockett, and Judy Belletti.
Very good, thanks, you gave it up.
Good afternoon, my name is Chris Buchanan, and I appreciate Representative Hovings and members of the committee, the opportunity to speak today in favor of LD 1168. I'm hoping to offer a little bit of a different perspective and maybe option today on LD 1168. I live in Melgrade, and I'm acting as the statewide coordinator for South East West Corridor. South East West Corridor, also known as Duke, is a resource, a communication hub for a decentralized coalition of Maine residents and organizations who share a multitude of concerns about the private or public-private east-west corridor proposal that has been introduced to communities around the state and in New Brunswick by Chimbrow CEO Peter Bigu and Chimbrow Project Manager Darryl Brown. So this is something that's come before communities kind of outside of the, outside of the state oversight already. We have also received permission in this testimony from the Maine Association of Planners to express their support for LD 1168. They were unable to provide testimony due to resource constraints. We're grateful for Senator Davis's leadership and commitment to the desires of his constituents to provide protection from eminent domain for a transportation project like the east-west corridor. The corridor is unfounded in public planning or public need, and is in fact hugely unpopular. Abbott, Charleston, Dexter, Dover-Foxcroft, Garland, Monson, Parkman, and Sangerville, eight communities have now passed a local ordinance, be it a moratorium, referendum, local self-government, or land use ordinance, to develop local protection. These actions clearly demonstrate a sense of vulnerability and a need for adequate state policy. As it stands, the only existing legal statute that may authorize the development of the corridor is the Public-Problem Partnership Law for Transportation Projects, Title 23, Section 4251, which is why we continue to address the shortcomings in this law, and I'm sorry for the repetitiveness before this committee and the Transportation Committee, but we haven't won this yet. Eminent domain powers for significant transportation projects should be limited to government agencies acting on behalf of the public. While LD 1168 effectively seeks to provide this protection, I have been informed by the MDOT legislatively as I am Nina Fisher, that the department wants to maintain eminent domain authority for private entities under the PPP law. Although we disagree for several reasons and ask this committee to make the changes outlined by LD 1168, we also want to offer the committee the option to simply eliminate unsolicited proposals from 23, Section 4251, ensuring that all PPPs are solicited by the department. Maine Sensible Transportation Policy Act, Title 23, subsection 73, is the guiding law for transportation planning, development, and maintenance in our state. However, the PPP law created a parallel legal pathway for significant transportation development that sidesteps the STPA. Although 23, Section 4251, Section 4I states that the PPP, quote, "must comply with applicable state laws," Section 3 states, quote, "notwithstanding any other provision of law." The PPP is an explicit provision of law that defines a different process. Also, the two laws blatantly contradict each other in both their reporting requirements, transparent versus confidential, and public input process, lengthy public input to the department versus one public hearing before the Transportation Committee, which might I add, has only two representatives that are in, that represent communities that are along the east-west corridor path, they're not transportation experts. The PPP also allows leveraging of up to 50% public taxpayer subsidy and eminent domain powers to private entities for solicited and unsolicited proposals, which is why we're here today. If the legal pathway for unsolicited proposals were eliminated, only proposals initiated by the department could access the extensive powers listed above, including eminent domain. The department's Deputy Commissioner John Nass expressed concern about eliminating unsolicited proposals in his testimony before the Transportation Committee earlier this session on LD 506, stating that, quote, "Unsolicited industry-based ideas are key to the PPP law. Maine DOT appreciates good ideas regardless of where they originate," end quote. The suggestion that eliminating a legal pathway for unsolicited proposals is the same as eliminating private sector ideas is simply inaccurate and misleading. No proposed or existing laws prohibit consideration of private sector ideas. On the contrary, the department has regional outreach coordinators responsible for receiving unsolicited ideas from all over the state, outlined in their brochure, which I forgot to enclose in your packet, so I'm sorry, I can get that to you before the work session. Regardless of its origin, the department may pursue a viable idea that is grounded in department planning and supported by stakeholders through the PPP statute by soliciting proposals. Eliminating unsolicited proposals in the PPP will ensure that eminent domain may only be used on projects that have gone through an appropriate accountability process with department oversight. Several of these points are also clearly stated in Representative Ralph Chapman's letter to the Transportation Committee for the work session on LD 506, which is enclosed in your packet. If the department remains concerned about eliminating unsolicited proposals from 23, Section 4251, for the reasons they have expressed, we suggest simply adding the language to the law, Section Two, stating, quote, "Nothing in this section is intended to prohibit the department from receiving ideas or to prohibit..." department from receiving ideas or to prohibit or otherwise affect programs that do not meet the criteria of this subsection," end quote. Enclosed in our testimony is a draft to reflect these suggestions. We urge you to vote a to pass on LD 1168 or consider this ultimate proposal. Thank you very much for your time. We happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this bill at this time? Anyone who would like to speak in favor of 1168? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm speaking for myself, Bryant Brown, who passed out his testimony. He asked me to read it out loud if I have permission to do that.
You may. Just introduce yourself.
I'm Sidney Mitchell of Dover-Foxcroft.
Yes, you're welcome. Have you here.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Bryant Brown. I am from Monson, Maine, formerly a town selectman. I would like to thank everybody who could make it here today, committee members and the public. I support LD 1168. I support this bill because the events of the last 20 years have created a real need for some sort of protection from large developers that are seeking only short-term financial gain without much, if any, benefit to the local communities. After the paper mills sold their land to real estate developers and investment groups, we entered an era of strip and spell, and this resulted in large pieces of land that could be had at a relatively low cost, which opens up the possibility for mega projects like the East West Highway. Those of us who live between Bangor and Bingham are surrounded to the northeast and west by this land, which puts us right in the crosshairs. It is reasonable to assume that if I buy a house next to the Portland International Jetport, that at some point there will be an expansion and eminent domain might be used, but this is not the case here. If you'd have told me 20 years ago that from the top of Katahdin, I could not look in any direction without seeing a windmill, that doesn't, that doesn't even pay for itself in its own lifetime, I'd have laughed. Nobody in Kingsbury is laughing today. If I'd been told we would seriously consider cutting the state in half with a four-lane superhighway just to save a Canadian truck driver two hours' driving time, I'd have laughed. Nobody in Monson is laughing now. Eminent domain should be used as a last resort for legitimate government projects that benefit the majority of the people, not a private project born from a corporate think tank that will only generate short-term jobs during construction. What's next? A canal from the St. Lawrence Seaway to the Knobscot Bay? This is why the state needs LD 1168, as it provides some level of protection for the people that happen to be in the way. It is very easy to say nobody leaves the negotiating table unhappy, but there is no negotiating when one side holds all the cards. Thank you for your time.
Well, Thomas Brown, thank you.
Yes, I will.
Anyone else who would like to speak in favor of LD 1168? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Your patient, Deloitte.
Of course.
You have good experience at them.
Yes.
Good afternoon. Representative Hobbins and members of the committee. My name is Jane Gray, and I represent Dingamawon and the 20,000 members and supporters in support of LD 1168. I'll be brief. Dingamawon does oppose the East West Highway. It would be cited in the middle of the largest unfragmented, temperate, broadly mixed forest in the nation and would have an unprecedented impact on Maine's wildlife and wildlife habitat. We think that LD 1168 makes a lot of sense. We've heard over and over again from the opponents of the project that they will not use eminent domain, so passing this bill shouldn't impact their opportunity. We think it's inappropriate to use eminent domain to benefit private interests, and so we urge those for LD 1168. I also have come off this testimony, they're busy with GMO, the other building. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Just regarding any questions, anyone? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of 1168 or return to comments? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Senator, Representative Hobbins and a lot of members of the Judiciary Committee. I'm Jane Rosen. I live in Knobscot in Hancock County. My husband and I own a camp in Washington, Connecticut, which is very close to what Chimbrow said, the East West Highway and Cross Route 9, so that's, that's where, where I came into the issue. Thank you for hearing these comments on LD 1168, which seeks to protect the public interest in large public-private transportation projects. Public concern about an East West SuperCorridor promoted by corporate interests shone a light on troubling loopholes in Maine's public-private partnership statute, which was written to enable major transportation projects. By defining a legal pathway for state approval without explicit reference to the Sensible Transportation Policy Act, the current PPP law would allow significant transportation projects to bypass the Sensible Transportation Act standards of environmental compliance, public oversight, and transparency. Such projects, which may or may not be in the public's best interest, could put Maine taxpayers on the hook for up to 50% of the cost, and if international borders were involved, could leave Maine vulnerable to investor estate disputes defined by existing trade agreements. Use of eminent domain could divide communities, not just physically, but also could divide those selling out to strike it rich from those watching places they loved get taken and torn up with no real benefit to anyone but corporate investors, which could happen under our current law. Limiting use of eminent domain to strictly public projects would be one step forward. Another safeguard proposed in an earlier bill, which went before the Transportation Committee last month, LD 506, would be to amend Section 4251 to require that any public-private transportation project be in accordance with the Sensible Transportation Policy. Thirdly, to eliminate unsolicited proposals would not restrict MDOT's ability to initiate a PPP project, but would assure such a project be consistent with state planning and go through the same open process as for public projects through the Sensible Transportation Policy. When LD 506 came before the Transportation Committee, MDOT objected to its amendments, saying the PPP law already works together with the Sensible Transportation Policy. But, as argued by that bill's sponsor, Representative Chapman, the Public-Private Partnership statute's phrase, "notwithstanding any other provision of law," and its entire structure supporting corporate confidentiality, suggests that it is a parallel pathway rather than a subservient pathway to Section 73, which is the Sensible Transportation Policy. MDOT testified that eliminating unsolicited proposals from the PPP would keep industry-based ideas from consideration, but nothing in either section prevents good ideas from being heard by the department. Eliminating unsolicited proposals with no obvious benefit could save the department and Maine's citizens time, tax dollars, stress, and lost productivity. And one thing I would throw in, in response to what was talked about Senator Davis about land values being low, I believe that there's a real phenomenon of condemnation, the light happened along the rumored path of the corridor, which has helped to depress rural economy and real estate values. In bringing these amendments before the Transportation Committee, we faced several empty seats at the hearing due to late day scheduling. This also affected the bill's work session. Despite strong support from the overwhelming majority who testified in favor of LD 506, the committee waited in DOT's objections, which in themselves demonstrate that the law is inconsistent and open to interpretation, raising the question, how well does anyone in Augusta really understand the PPP law? It seems appropriate that these concerns about Maine's PPP law should come now before this committee, whose jurisdiction includes property rights, civil rights, freedom of access, confidentiality, inconsistencies, all areas in which the existing PPP law is problematic. I urge you to consider these amendments to the PPP law as you deliberate LD 1168.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this bill at this time?
Good afternoon. Representative Hobbins and members of the Judiciary Committee. My name is Eliza Donahue, and I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Natural Resources Council, Maine, 16,000 members and supporters in support of this bill. I too will keep it short. The shortcomings in the public-private partnership law, so impressed that I just said that, not stuttering, described by those before me, as you know, became apparent with the proposal for the East West Corridor. And our stamp is deeply concerned about the impacts of a possible corridor, and we don't believe that such a project is in Maine's best interest. An East West Highway energy corridor would be a raceway for Canadian truckers and a pathway to, for undisclosed energy supplies, but other than creating jobs, would not benefit Maine people. Instead, the corridor would harm forest lands and fragment the North Woods, damage rivers, streams, and waterways, and destroy fish and wildlife habitat and undermine Maine's outdoor recreation economy. We believe that LD 1168 is good policy for all public-private partnerships, and we urge you to vote a to pass. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Ms. Speaker. Do you have any questions at all? Any quick questions?
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this bill at this time? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker. Sorry about the wait, Ms. Speaker. I'm trying to get your audio quick.
Thank you. Thank you, Representative Hobbins and members of the Joint Standing Committee on Judiciary. I am Nina Fisher. I'm manager of Legislative Constituent Services for the Maine Department of Transportation, and Maine DOT respectfully opposes LD 1168. LD 1168 would prohibit the Maine Department of Transportation from utilizing our eminent domain rights when engaged in public-private partnership or P3, as outlined in 23 MRSA, Section 4251. Maine's P3 law was enacted in 2010. It was sponsored by Representative Bruce McDonald of Bootleg. Excuse me. It was crafted and was casted by way of money as a way to stimulate the Maine economy and providing Maine DOT another tool in our toolbox to provide for infrastructure needs. With legislative approval, Maine DOT can enter into agreements with private entities for the building, ownership, leasing, or financing of certain transportation projects. The P3 law is triggered when Maine DOT estimates that the initial capital cost for a public-private partnership project is $25 million or more, or when the proposal includes placing tolls on existing transportation facilities that were not previously subject to tolls. This legislation has been reviewed several times by this committee, the Transportation Committee, and the Right-to-Go Advisory Council. And just to clarify, the East West proposal is not a public-private partnership. It's not been brought forward as one, and we currently have no open public-private partnerships. With respect to eminent domain, P3 law already has safeguards to prevent improper private use. Section 7 of the P3 law reads, "Exercise of Powers." If the department exercises its powers of eminent domain for the development and construction of a transportation facility pursuant to this subchapter, the department must retain ownership rights and interests taken. The state may provide maintenance, law enforcement, and other services with respect to a transportation facility owned by a private entity when the agreement provides a reasonable reimbursement for services. This essentially prevents its use for private purposes. Other safeguards exist, including requirement to get necessary permits, which includes extensive public input and legislative approval before any project proceeds, another of the very public process. The P3 law was aimed at large new construction projects and has the public safeguards to match. To do such projects, projects that regulators and legislature must approve, eminent domain will likely be necessary. Eliminating that authority would have the effect of rendering the P3 law essentially useless. If that is the goal, or if the goal is to prevent the use of the P3 law on a specific project, an outright repeal or flipability amendment of the P3 law would be a more straightforward approach. However, if Maine wants a P3 option, eminent domain needs to be a part of it, and LD 1168 would want to pass. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Representative here.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You said that this should be in favor for part of the East West is not part of the case.
It's not.
It's not, and it never will be.
That's, I believe that Mr. Vicky has stated he will not avail himself of that essential statute. Any, what, we've been doing this dance, and it's a very eloquent dance, I respect this we can, for four years now, I think. I know my third child, when we first kind of started going back and forth between committees. So, some things to keep in mind. So, Mr. Vicky, I believe, if I'm not trying to put words in his mouth, has said that he would not avail himself of the P3 law. We've had different bills over the years that have said, "Don't use it." We have stated publicly that we would not use it for that, and the whole P3 law requires legislative approval before anything is proceeded. I mean, I think many of you around this horse, you would recognize just as well as myself that a legislation requiring us to use P3 for East West Highway would never pass. So, I, I can say with 99.9% certainty that P3 law will not be used for East West Highway. Now, what it looks like 50 or 100 years down the road, I can only guess, but in this climate, and my guess is, in the next 50 years, you're not going through and you see East West Highway disrupted using this P3 law.
Paul Fisher. Thank you. References back to Senator Davis' testimony to PPP law. Part of that, that is still up and running, moving forward partnership, right, with the DOD, and that, that happened? That's going on?
Uh, uh, no. I'm not certain what Senator Davis was referencing. Like, he had two points that I think he wanted to, not trying to put words in his mouth, but he might have wanted to ask me about. One had to do with a story that he told of his grandfather's land being taken and then turned back a year later and brought to bed. I am not familiar, there's actually a section of law that kind of prohibits that from occurring, so I don't really know what he was referencing in that.
Well, I particularly was focused on the issue of, of the partnership, private-public partnership, where there was a land being eventually offered from the state of Maine for a commercial business to be established. That is, that. Patrick?
I can speak to what we use it for transportation purposes, and I believe your analyst is far more versed in, in legal language than I can ever dream to be. I can talk to you, and Section 1 of Stat, or Title 1 of Chapter 21 talks about eminent domain and who can use it and who can exercise it. I don't really know of a scenario in which that would occur. I, I, we have heard stories, horror stories, like telling this we can, there are other states that you hear of them doing exactly that. We hear of them using powers of eminent domain to come into a blighted community to purchase up businesses that are failing or vacant property proposals, but then slotting them back. That's not something that we use in transportation. That's not anything that, in greeting the law, that I can see without whatever occur.
Thank you.
And just to further clarify, for transportation purposes, whenever we purchase anything for eminent domain, it's generally for capital expenditures. If we're just putting a spinning base down on the road, we don't get any property rights for that.
for that, obviously. It comes with full reconstruction, it might come with some drainage rights. We're having water issues on a road, we might need to purchase some drainage easements, which is a type of eminent domain process, but we'll pay to deposit a lot of there, and we have to pay fair market value. Our use of eminent domain for capital projects is always regulated by, obviously, state law, the Constitution, and regulated by our federal oversight. But any of our major capital projects generally have a 80% federal share, so we have to follow those laws as well. It's highly regulated, fair market value, there is an appeal process, it's, we have eight years to use it, or else we develop that. It's a highly regulated process.
Thank you. Senator?
Thank you, Senator. If, if this law was passed, what could you give for an example of something other than the east-west title that is essential for the state that we no longer need to, you wouldn't be able to do without?
I was just kind of putting out my thinking cap and thinking about what would we ever use the P3 law for? Based on Maine, based on our population density, it's not going to be a railroad bridge. Because if a private industry is going to invest in something and want a rate of return, they're not going to get it on a railroad bridge. I mean, I think that if Chenrow thought that the east-west highway would be profitable and would come to us with a P3 proposal, and would be coming before you, I don't, I don't think that that's the case. What we might see as a P3 proposal, and we are seeing it below the $25 million threshold, so for smaller projects, you're going to see around ports, you're going to see around rail, you might see a private company, you know, ESKI, coming into the International Marine Terminal in Portland right now. They may look to invest in more refrigeration, they may look to invest in larger land purchases, or new partnerships with rail going in and out of that International Marine Terminal, where they stand to make some of a profit if that infrastructure is profitable. But again, if we use any, exercise any eminent domain, the property remains with us, it never flows over to the private industry. So, we've had no P3 proposals to date, just, again, with the population density, where would businesses want to invest? Unless they might throw away, they're going to invest in someone where they're going to see a rate of return. So, probably be rail, given those margins are pretty thin of our operations, most likely be ports is my guess.
Any else? No, sir. One?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a quick question, thank you. I'm kind of new to the legal part of this, I'm very aware of the east-west highway that, are you saying that if the east-west highway were to continue through the path of Mr. Vigyu's proposal? What I heard you say is that Mr. Vigyu has said that he wouldn't use the P3 law, but is there statute stopping that? I mean, is there statute? None on the books?
Yes, I'm, I'm not really sure of your question, but I may have two different answers?
It's my fault, let me try to clarify.
No, okay.
Two questions, actually. Could he avail himself of the P3 law if he were to go forward with the east-west highway? And secondly, take the P3 out of it. If Mr. Vigyu were to go forward with the east-west highway, is there a possibility for eminent domain in its construction?
That's a really good question, I'm excited, I'm going to back into it. I think your analysts can go on much further about who can exercise eminent domain and what it looks like. As a citizen, I'm not an attorney, I can find no section of statute in which a private business can use eminent domain. Utility companies can use them for utility purposes, and as through the U C, and again, looking at how we regulate it. They've got to jump through a lot, please be able to exercise that. So, I know of no section of statute, I may be taking from that, some which private business can just use eminent domain. So, I don't really know what scenario that would occur. So, second, so let's say all of a sudden, Chenrow says, you know what, we really do like that P3 law, and please, nobody assume that that conversation has occurred. But if they say, we really do like that P3 law, we think we want to partner with you, we think we want to build an east-west highway, we want to avail ourselves of that law. So, the first two hurdles they have to jump through. The first one is an internal line, in which they bring this proposal to the commissioner, and the commissioner has to say, and talk to his staff, and say, hey, this has got legs, or no, this doesn't have legs. I can tell you right now, if this comes forward, we're going to say this doesn't have legs. So, that's the first hurdle they have to cross. They have to get past a very preliminary review internally from the Department of Transportation. The second hurdle is you folks. It has to come in the form of legislation. We have to have legislative approval before we can move forward, with any other steps will be pre-processed. So, we have to come before you and say, we have this proposal, and this is why we like it. Obviously, we like it to be brought forward with consideration, or, no. That, so that's, those are the first major hurdles before anything can go through. So, before any real-time effort of state taxpayer dollars are invested, the folks around this horse shore, the transportation and the full legislature have to move it away. So, that's, you're still a safeguard.
Any other questions?
I have one. Is there anything in the, in the segment of law which we heard, or a testimony about that in a parallel path, it's the not standing? I certainly understand, the not standing, so, it seems to me that I'm, is there any possibility of state acquiring property domain for a public-private partnership? And in effect, not deeming it, or you said that the state has to retain it, but doing so for a purpose which is substantially a private purpose? You described, for instance, improvements at the port and expanding land so you could put it in refrigeration. Well, is that something for enterprise purposes, or is it for the people of the state of Maine's purposes, that somebody would expand refrigeration? Sign to me like an example of the state determining domain doing something for private interest?
That's a really good question, Senator, and I think what they were referencing in that conversation, we're talking about a parallel path, we're talking about a previous bill that was heard and worked and died in the Transportation Committee, that deals with comparison between public-private partnership, the P3 law, and our Sensible Transportation Policy Act, which governs how we function, how we take on any project. So, I think that was the parallel path comparison. And I think your point about refrigeration is a really good point, I think you bring that up. That, that trickles down in effect, it helps Maine ports, it brings more shipments through the ports, which ultimately results in more land cut, more profit, it helps Maine businesses that are looking to ship out of those ports, different businesses out of different countries. We have, trying to think on a live-off work session, but just with our partnership with ESKI, which is now shipping to Kysland and Greenland, and it's opened up that whole trade market to Maine businesses that do not exist before. So, there is, we can certainly argue without, without any difficulty, that there's a tremendous benefit to Maine residents and Maine businesses with that port expansion.
But who gets to utilize that facility?
The Maine port authority, the International Marine Terminal, and whatever, obviously, the products are now being kept in refrigeration before it can ship off either by rail, or there's trucks that can unload them. So, refrigeration is a necessary component of the whole shipping process, which benefits Maine people, which benefits the business that's doing the shipping.
I understand, you're talking about a growing segment, but it's still for me, that's a great area, even from your description, as to whether that is a private interest that works through the port, you license the port, or it takes up public interest. You probably would need to explore that further. Any other questions?
Okay, I think, probably through our session, but I, we had a conversation with Senator Davis, along the same lines of, I believe, the eminent domain, in view to the benefit of the private entity, and I don't see any more of that. Please, we have a special question.
Any questions? See none?
Thank you, Senator.
Anyone else who wishes to testify in opposition to LD 1168? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to testify in either for nor against, or information on?
Senator Johnson, members of the committee. My name is Ralph Chapman, I represent House District 133, anti-communist. I'm speaking neither for nor against the bill before you, but to bring you some information about the context for it. I'm sorry, I don't have my comments in written form for you at this moment, I'd be happy to provide answers to any questions that you have. The context and information that I wanted to bring to you has to do with how the public-private partnership for transportation law works in contrast to how the Sensible Transportation Policy Act works, because you've heard about both of them, and I have looked into this in some detail. So, the critical elements of the Sensible Transportation Policy Act is what is known as a public participatory process in three areas, which is the planning, the capital requirements, and the design for a project. In the public, in the public-private partnership statute, a major component of that is the ability to have a project that is not known by the public, it does not have to be known by the public, and in fact, the public can be prevented from knowing about it until it's at the point where it gets legislative approval. That point where it gets legislative approval is after it's been designed, after the capital aspects of it have been considered, certainly after the planning. So, the major point here is that although the person from the department said there were no public-private partnership proposals before the present time, if there were, she could not, and if they were asked to be kept in proprietary, she could not tell you. And this is the major, major difference, which is why someone before me, and I'm sorry, wasn't here, described those two processes as parallel processes, because you cannot have a public participatory process in something that the public cannot legally know about. So, I just wanted to let you know that that's the context of how the public-private partnership part of the statute works in comparison to how the part of the Sensible Transportation Policy Act works. As you've heard, the public-private partnership part of the statute has been in place for 40 years, the Sensible Transportation Policy Act has been in place for, I think, more than 25 years. That, I just wanted to make sure that you had that context. I'd be happy to provide any additional information about what the consequences are of those differences, if you'd like, but I wanted to make sure that you, okay?
Any questions? Anyone else who wishes to testify in either for nor against LD 1168? Seeing none, the hearing closed for LD 1168.